Well, I'd like to call to order the Fridley Public School Board meeting for February 19th, 2019. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda for the meeting?
So moved. Second?
I have a motion by Devil, seconded by Prowato, to approve the agenda for February 19th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. Our next item would be the spotlight on recognition, beginning with the Employee of the Month for February. Dr. Hile?
Thank you. Good evening Chair Riddle and School Board members. It's with pleasure that I send out a huge congratulations to Anne Matthews. She's our Employee of the Month for February. Anne has served as our media clerk at Fridley High School for one year. In the media center, Anne's energy for our students and our staff is second to none. She is always extremely positive, caring, and helpful. She shows empathy, compassion, and respect. As a communicator, Anne expresses ideas and information clearly in a variety of ways. She's open-minded, always thoughtful of the perspective of others. The students just simply love her, and the staff respect her hard work, dedication, and professionalism. As one staff member noted, Anne has been diligent in helping all of our students to work and be successful. She's always positive as she navigates the perils of the copying machine, student technology, and student work questions. Another student member noted that Anne hit the ground running when she started as media clerk at Fridley High School. She is friendly and helpful to all staff and students. She's a true risk taker, as she has never worked in a school setting before, and has quickly adapted to our school culture. We are so lucky to have Anne as a member of our team, and congratulate her on the honor of her Employee of the Month. And that was written by Ms. Patty Hand, the principal of Fridley High School.
Congratulations. Next, we'll move on to the important part of the evening, Student Staff Reports. We're starting with Hayes' presentation.
So can you hear me okay if I just talk from here? A little closer than you were in the older room. So I know you saw my name on the report tonight, and you went, "All right." Probably a half an hour of data and all kinds of fun stuff coming from Hayes. So I brought some kids with me tonight. So the kids are going to do the brunt of this presentation, and then, just when you thought it wasn't going to get any better, we're going to dazzle you with some data. Because I have some literacy specialists here and a math specialist, and our IB coordinators here to talk to you about those things as well. So I am going to, you know, on the principal side of things, this is the perfectly executed presentation, because I'm going to sit down and let it all happen. So I'm going to invite Ms. Evy Hanson up here to get things off to us. Great start tonight.
Hello. Good evening. My name is Evelyn Hanson, and joining me today is Grace Weingart, Sasha Bugs, and Wellington Chesson, also Kenna Hanson and Sophia Tepper. This evening we'll be talking about the different giraffe spotlights. We'd like to start off with a thing we call T-shirts and tells. We are going to hand out grape juice and T-shirts. We hope you will enjoy our presentation.
That's so sweet. Thank you.
I was just thinking about how cool these shirts were.
Thank you so much.
Wow. Love it.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sasha Bugs. Today's music crew purchased ukuleles this year for third and fourth graders. We really enjoyed learning how to play this during instrument. Each student had a ukulele to play during music class. Ms. Orem, our music teacher, taught us finger position. The best part was learning how to play songs with these instruments. Two of our favorite songs were "Thunder" and "Don't Worry, Be Happy." We would love to play "Don't Worry, Be Happy" for you.
You guys are getting spoiled here.
I know, right?
They obviously knew it was my birthday. I can just tell you.
You might have set the bar high for Stevenson.
I know, right?
This fall, Hayes had our first-ever color run. Kids ran a quarter-mile course. At various points along the way, the kids that ran were splashed with color. The purpose of the color run was to raise money for our PTO group. I would love to splash you all with some bright colors to show what it would be like, but Mr. P said he would prefer having a job in the morning.
You can splash him.
The first Friday of every month, Norman, our lovable green friend, takes time off his busy schedule to come to our cafeteria for the monthly kickoff assembly. During this time, kids get awarded for being principled or in the blue. In addition, other Hayes teachers participate in teaching us important lessons. Sugar is a therapy dog that comes to Hayes a couple times per month. We love to read here at Hayes. Some fun things to help us get excited about our reading and encourage us to read more. We can dress up as our favorite book character, visit the book fair in the library, or go to literacy night. The Reed Baron is another character that has visited our school, and when he does, he's known to leave a trail of books.
The Cops in the Cafe program is when police officers come to Hayes to eat lunch with small groups of students in the cafeteria. We think that it is a great opportunity to talk with them and ask questions. It's also a great learning experience. The Fridley police officers have so much to teach us.
High Flyer Awards are given to fourth-grade students who are recognized for working hard and always giving it their all. Every Friday, our principal comes down and asks everybody to come out to the fourth-grade hallway. He gives out two High Flyer Awards and gives them a kite, an award, and a gift card.
Twenty-dollar gift card?
Wow.
For where?
For where are we going?
What do we need to do? Friday?
The first Friday of the month?
We did our first one last week. Grace was one of our recipients.
Yay.
They actually asked me a question tonight. They said, "Can we do the clap?" So do you want to do, should we teach the school board to clap this?
What's the clap?
Okay, so if we're going to...
If we're going to be sharp, why not?
If we were going to give one of these High Flyer Awards away, we meet in the common area. So you've been to our schools, and you've seen the new additions, so there's kind of a common area there. And we get all the kids out in there, and we form a circle. And usually, I have some, you know, really wonderfully motivating words for them before I do this award. And on the edge of there, there are tiles there as they sit on the floor. And I'll announce who the kids are, and sort of remind them how we get there, you know, what happens. And we talked this year, too, about improvement. We're going to give a couple of improvement awards away in May. But when we're done, Mr. Hanson, one of our fourth-grade teachers, made up this clap last year where we sort of celebrate. So these two kids or three kids are in the middle of the group, and we start by going like this. We go...
How bad.
And I finish it off with three kind words. Back to class.
Just like that.
So I do want to have Candace Riley, Tina Utley, and Kirsten Wickman are here tonight, too, and we're going to talk data, share some things that have happened with student achievement in our school, and I'll turn it over to them.
That's a tough act to follow, guys. Nice job. I'm Candace Riley, and I am the literacy coach and instructional leader at Hayes Elementary. And so we're going to start off with some inquiry into growth. Our focus this year was to focus on all of our students growing at a typical or an aggressive rate, so they'd be growing at the 40th percentile or higher. So part of our screening system for all students, that they participate in their assessments three times a year for reading and math. So we had percentile growths for each grade level, and then we evaluated where they were mid-year. And as you can see, we have really positive growth for our primary years. They're already surpassing their end-of-the-year goal for their growth rates. And then for third and fourth grade, they're really close. And given the high content for third and fourth grade, it's not surprising that they're just within a couple of percentage points. So it's very exciting to see, and gives us a really positive outcome for the end-of-the-year growth rates. Which brings us to our next component, would be our inquiry into the different strategies we're implementing and following through literacy at Hayes. And that is focusing on our balanced literacy model, our guided reading, the increase of academic vocabulary, and our interventions for students at risk. That brings us back to our balanced literacy approach, which is not new for us at Hayes and Fridley, but we want to continue with maintaining the integrity of our literacy block, to make sure we're hitting all of those components, making sure that every classroom is participating in their whole-group core instruction grade level, their word studies and their writing, and then also having the differentiated instruction into our balanced literacy of guided reading. So through those assessments, which will be our next component, through our three-times-a-year assessments, we focus our small-group strategies in doing our guided reading, our flexible grouping. So we group their students based on their needs and what their data shows us. A group can consist of two to six students, and then they get really individualized instruction on what they need with their teacher. And it's also assessment-based. We're not just giving what we think they need. We have data, we're evaluating what their gaps are, and moving them towards where we want their benchmark goals to be. The groups are also flexible and needs-based, so they're not stuck in the blue group for the year round. We are constantly progress monitoring, evaluating how they're performing, and adjusting what their needs are. And one of the models we've been using for our guided reading instruction is the Jan Richardson model, which is a very research-based model to plan small-group reading instruction. And lastly, would be our focus on... What's the next word? Nah!
Hi, my name's Tina Utley, and I'm the Hayes interventionist and math coach. And I have the honor to talk about some of the really exciting things that we have going on at Hayes. I'm only going to highlight a few of the many. The first one would be balanced math. And with balanced math, this past summer, our math team got together and provided some trainings for the teachers who are interested in trying to change the structure of their math block. The purpose of this was to increase math engagement, to have a structure, to have stronger differentiation, to have a better understanding of the students' individual needs, and to increase feedback back to the students. So with that, we really made sure that we were going to maintain the integrity of our core math instruction, which is the Expressions curriculum, but also incorporating some of the great math practices that we have been working on the last few years, and that includes number talks, some of the rich math tasks that come through various places, one of them, Joe Bowler. Also, to give the opportunity for small-group work to occur, whether it's homogeneous grouping or heterogeneous grouping, offer interventions within the classroom at that time also. The great things that have come out of this approach this year is some of the writing and math, which has been a heavier emphasis with the guided and the balanced math approach. Math with someone, so there's more dialogue and vocabulary being used in math. Math and technology, which we have some great sources out there now to bring in technology to emphasize, or to help us practice some of our math strategies. And then individual math, where they're still responsible to do math independently, and then still have the opportunity to do math in other ways. We have 16 teachers at Hayes who are doing this approach. Ten of them went through training, and then when the training trickled out, a lot of the teachers who didn't have the opportunity to go to training were like, "Can we try it? Can we do it anyway? I would really like to learn more about it." So six more teachers jumped on and have been sampling it also, too, with some of the sessions that I've offered within the classroom. Last, two weeks ago, we sent out a survey to those who are doing the balanced math approach, and out of that, 100% of them want to continue to do this approach next year, and they love the flexibility of the approach that we are offering with the balanced math, and also the fact that they get to, every child has the opportunity to sit with the teacher and get that attention that they need. Also, first grade is a big, you know, we really work hard on building number sense within those lower-grade levels. And so one of the fun things that we do each year is Place and Value Boot Camp. And with that, I go around to our first-grade classrooms. I'm Sergeant Ut. They become cadets. And we go through an action-packed, highly movable, my arms are sore the next day, push-up exercise boot camp to learn tens and ones. We learn chance. It's highly engaging. And then they go on what we call the obstacle course, where they walk around the room, and they do different activities that go along with tens and ones. So the kids really enjoy it. The teachers get into it. They dress up, too. I dress up. We become characters, and I actually really feel cool when I walk through the hallways and they just start saluting me, and I'm like, "Yeah, Sergeant Utley, that's right." So that's one thing that we do in our first grade that's really exciting. Another thing that we have going on for the first time this year, we have a couple firsts going on, is Lego League. And so this is the first year Hayes has had it. We have 10 third- and fourth-grade students who are participating. It's led by Sarah Armstrong and A.J. Hanson. And through that, they do intend on going to the expo at the end of the year. I believe it's April this year. But it's been great because the students are very hands-on, very inquiry-based, great for a lot of our engineering standards that go through. But I like that we also brought in spontaneous construction, which is a Moundsview team. Moundsview has quite a few teams, but it's great because they came in and shared a lot of the knowledge that they have because of the years that they've gone through, and they were able to answer the students' questions about what the expo is going to be like, what are the next steps in Lego League. They got to drive the robot. They got to code another robot that they had. And then the end, they earned a nice license, so that I really couldn't drive that robot. Turns out, I'm not a gamer, so I realize I need to practice with my students, or my own children. And the last, more exciting, because I have two students who would like to come to talk to you about Bedtime Math. Bedtime Math, this is the first year we've had Bedtime Math at Hayes in book form. We've had the app in the past, but this year, we have Bedtime Math running through our second grade. It's the first year with the book. We have 55 students participating, and I have two wonderful assistants. We have Sophia Tepper, and we have Kenna Hanson, who would like to tell you a little bit about what Bedtime Math is. I'll move this down for you ladies. Come here, sweetheart. All right. Go ahead, ladies.
Bedtime Math is a collection of stories that involve math. There are three or four levels of math questions. We ones are for younger students, then the questions get harder for little kids and big kids.
When we read the stories, we show our thinking and post-it notes. Then we put it in the page so we can discuss problems later.
There are three or 38 stories per book. We fill out a constellation sheet as we go through, then return the book to Mrs. Utley.
We celebrate our learning with a party for completed 24 stories.
After all three books are done, we will really party.
My favorite part of Bedtime Math is how unique and interesting each story is. I love Bedtime Math because my mom lets me stay up a little later because I'm learning.
My favorite part of Bedtime Math is reading the poem "Fun Stories" in the book.
All right. I'm Kirsten Wickman. I am very proud to be the IB coordinator at Hayes. And being an IB school is something that adds a ton of value to our kiddos. So we are, of course, standards-based. We base our curriculum around the Minnesota State standards, but the IB helps us bring all those extra layers of depth, relevance, challenge. And so as we were getting ready for this, I asked Sasha and Wellington, "What was your favorite unit of inquiry?" Because we organize our curriculum of units of inquiry. What did you guys say?
Read.
Why?
Because we get to communicate with our friends and to share opinions about different states and regions.
Nice. Cool. So we are also internationally-minded and open-minded communicators, so multilingual environment. We are all learning Spanish as an additional language. This is something that we value a lot, and really being exposed to multiple perspectives. And then, we also, as an IB school, take to heart that idea that we are trying to make the world a better place, that that's part of what it means to be learners and human beings. And so we try to really model action, practice action. And we do a school-wide action project every year. And Evy and Grace are going to come and tell you a little bit about what we're doing right now.
At Hayes, we take action to create a better world. Right now, we are partnering with an organization called We Help Too, that provides limbs to amputees in developing countries around the world.
We are hosting a Funky Socks fundraiser this month to raise awareness and to raise money for this good cause. Our goal is to sell 90 packs of socks, which would provide one limb and change somebody's life. You can visit our Hayes Facebook page to learn more and order your own Funky Socks.
Thank you.
We're going to show you a video, just to kind of finish our thing off. That'll take a couple of minutes, but there's a story to this. There's a backstory to this that I don't think any of you have ever heard before. So a long, long time ago, there was this young guy who came to Fridley. He was actually hired to be a principal, and he hasn't left, okay? And he came to the PTO that first summer that he was here. He met with the PTO in August. And I'm not talking about Mr. Bosler. I'm talking about the senior elementary principal. So what happened is, I was meeting with the PTO in August, and they hardly know me. And they said, "Do you have any creative ideas about something that you'd like to do to kind of kick off your time?" I said, "Yeah, I do. I wrote a song about Hayes." They went, "Oh, nice." I said, "I'd like to go into the studio and record the song." "Oh, okay. Can we hear the song?" Because they were thinking it was going to be one of these rah-rah songs, right? So I went out and grabbed my guitar and came in, played it for them. They funded it instantly. Went into the studio a couple weeks later with a couple friends of mine, and we kicked this off. And we ordered 1,000 CDs, and we sold them for a buck at our open house. We made $500 on the deal initially, and then it's sort of been alive forever. So what we did with it today is we put it to pictures and videos. So we'll end our time with you tonight by showing you the Hayes video with the Hayes School song. Thank you for listening to us tonight and having us. It was a pleasure to be here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for telling us about your school. Good job.
Good job.
Well, I know a place that's fun to be, it's a very, very special elementary where the kids are neat and all so sweet, the staff and teachers are really, really well. Hey, hey, it's got to be Minnesota's number one elementary. Well, hey, hey, it's got to be Hayes Elementary. We got teachers that are so cool, and all us kids follow the golden rule, making this the best place to be, the very best school in history. Well, hey, hey, it's got to be Minnesota's number one elementary. Well, hey, hey, it's got to be Hayes Elementary. H-A-Y-E-S, Hayes School is above the rest. H-A-Y-E-S, Hayes School is the best. Others try to do the case, others try to recreate, but there simply ain't no way to do what we do every day. Hey, hey, what can you say? We're the world's best elementary. Well, hey, hey, what can you say? We're the best in the world today. Well, hey, hey, it's got to be Minnesota's number one elementary. Well, hey, hey, it's got to be Hayes Elementary. Hey, Hayes Elementary. Hey, Hayes Elementary. Hey, Hayes Elementary. Hayes Elementary.
Very nice. Very nice, you guys.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. For the lovely treats. Thank you. Thank you.
Well, next, we move on to the, the boring part of the evening now with the business action items. Our first is a resolution for the school board recognition week. Dr. Heil.
All right, if your evening could not get any better than giraffe shirts and, I hope that's apple cider.
It's yummy, it is.
Okay. Today, I want to recognize a resolution from MSBA for school board recognition week. So whereas Fridley School District recognizes the importance of public education in our community, and whereas Fridley District 14 appreciates the vital role played by those individuals who, as local school board members, establish policies to ensure an efficient, effective school system, and whereas school board members serve as a voice that enables our community to preserve local management and control of our public schools, and whereas school board members are charged with representing our local education interests to state and federal government, ensuring compliance with state and federal law, and whereas school board members selfishly devote their knowledge, time, and talents as advocates for our schoolchildren, whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education, responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and the public's expectations to the district. So now therefore, it is resolved that Fridley School District 14 recognizes and salutes the members of the Fridley School District 14 School Board by proclaiming February 18th through the 22nd as school board recognition week. We have certificates as well as your cookie, did you see your cookie?
Yes. Thank you.
It feels so special.
Thank you.
Your birthday just keeps getting better.
I know, right?
Exactly.
Don't push it.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We do need a motion to approve the resolution proclaiming February 18th to 22nd as school board recognition week.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion by Adam, seconded by Stark, to approve the resolution proclaiming February 18th to the 22nd as school board recognition week. Any further discussion? If not, clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Perito?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Next, we have a resolution for accepting gifts. Every month, we're fortunate to receive gifts from the public, and we do so in a resolution to accept those gifts and thank those donors. And for the past month, the following persons donated to Hayes Elementary School for a total of $12.60, an anonymous donor. Do we have a motion to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Delvo, seconded by Thornton, to accept the gifts and thank the donors for their contributions. Any further discussion? If not, clerk, could you please call the roll again?
Mr. Adam?
Aye.
Ms. Delvo?
Aye.
Ms. Perito?
Aye.
Mr. Riddle?
Aye.
Ms. Stark?
Aye.
Ms. Thornton?
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Next, we have a motion to approve the advertisement for bids for the parking lot construction at Hayes for the summer of 2019. Mr. Hoffman?
Good evening, Chair Riddle, members of the school board, Superintendent Heil. Before you, is a request to approve the advertisement of bids for the Hayes Elementary School parking lot project this summer. This project is funded by our long-term facility maintenance fund, and as part of our 10-year plan, so we do have the funds available to do this project. It will begin after school is out, and it'll be completed before the teachers come back at the end of August, so the timing works well. This is just the advertisement portion. Once we get the sealed bids back in early March, we will then bring the low bidder to the board for approval before the contract would proceed. So I'll open it up to any questions you may have, otherwise turn it over for your consideration.
The changes will be on the website, or they can contact the finance office?
Yep, they can contact the business office, and we can work with them on walking through those changes. There's some slight changes to the layout of the parking to make better traffic flow. The number of parking stalls is the same, so that does not change in any way.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Perueta, seconded by Stark, to approve the advertisement for bids for the parking lot construction at Hayes for the summer of 2019. Any further discussion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the second reading for several policies. Ms. Oftedal.
Board Chair Riddle, board members, and Superintendent Heil, I present to you for the second reading the following policies. Policy 509, enrollment of non-resident students, followed with the procedural document 509P. Policy 511, student fundraising, with 511P for the procedural document for fundraising. Form 511 for student fundraising as well. Policy 527 for student use and parking of motor vehicles on school property, and policy 531, addressing the pledge of allegiance. I present those to you and ask for your adoption of these policies.
Have a motion to approve the second reading and adoption of the policies previously named?
So, so moved. Second.
Have a motion by Delvo, seconded by Perueta, to approve the second reading and adoption of policies 509, 509P, 511, 511P, 511F, 527, and 531. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we move on to our consent agenda. This consists of the regular meeting minutes from our school board meeting that was held on January 15th. The work session also held on January 15th, the monthly financial reports, new contracts, amendments, leaves of abstinence, terminations, resignations, and retirements. Note, the MDE user access recertification for Lori Andler and Dr. Kim Heil as our identified official with authority, the Indian Education Parent Committee Resolution, the joint powers agreement between Anoka County and Independent School District 14 for election services, the superintendent search procedure, as well as the 2018-19 amended academic calendar. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved.
Second.
Have a motion by Adam, seconded by Thornton, to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the consent agenda passes. Next on the agenda item for this evening is student enrollment. Dr. Heil.
Thank you. For the month in January, we did have a slight uptick in our enrollment numbers, so for grade levels K through 12, we did see an increase of 26 students for our school district, so that's good news to hear.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to the first reading of several policies. Ms. Seifert-Hurtling.
Good evening, School Board Chair Riddle, members of the board, Superintendent Heil. Tonight, I bring forth to you some policies for first reading. Policy 507, corporal punishment and use of force. Some changes to be made based on Minnesota State Statue and the MSBA model policies. Policy 516, student medication. There's an addition of some language based on the MSBA model policy also. Policy 526, hazing, with the addition of how schools will disseminate the policy. Policy 530, student immunization. Currently discussing, there's some procedures in the policy, and those are going to just be removed and put into more of a procedural document.
Any questions on those policies? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up will be reports from school board members, beginning with the Northwest Suburban Integration School District Joint Powers Board, which was held on January 16th. I'm on that board, and was our typical January meeting, which is the, the major organizational meeting for the group. We elect all our officers, like we did here, for our board here, as well as all of that. I'm, I guess, sort of happy to say, I'll be serving as the chair for that Joint Powers Board for another year, so they'll have to put up with me for another one. The other big things that we talked about, we went through our financial audit that began from last year, and everything's looking very good there, and talked about the beginning of the magnet school grants. They're really just starting to kick off the new grant that we had just received for Fridley that was with regards to our PYP program for our pre-K students. There's also several, four other districts and buildings that have their own magnet school programs that are kicking off also as part of that total grant for that. And that is a five-year grant, so it's going to help us all along from the whole district standpoint. With that, we'll move on to the Association of Metropolitan School Districts Board Meeting from February 1st. Dr. Heil.
Thank you. At that meeting on February 1st, we had a presentation by Representative Cheryl Joakim, and she spoke, she is a chair of the House of Education Policy Committee, as well as a member of the House Education Finance Committee. Representative Joakim shared what she would be working on this year, and those areas are mental health, special ed reforms, specifically in regards to reducing the paperwork for special ed staff, and working on a comprehensive sex education curriculum to be passed. She also mentioned that they will be working at Finance Department, working on the impact on taxes, what impact they have, taxes have on families. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up will be, the final one would be the Northeast Metro 916th Board Meeting held February 6th, or was it the 7th?
Actually, we postponed due to weather, so we ended up doing a call-in and had an abbreviated meeting, so didn't have presentations, but we did vote on a couple of items. The most important being that the 916 district will be the educational service provider for the Emily program in Woodbury. They have a new program that opened in Woodbury, and so that district is going to be providing those services, which is a benefit to our students if any of them are placed there in their programs, that they get that continuity, so when they are able to come back to Fridley, they are not far behind educationally. So that's all I have with our abbreviated meeting.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to important future school board dates. The next AMSD Board Meeting will be held March 1st, 7:00 a.m. at the Cora Center. The next Northeast Metro 916th Board Meeting, March 6th at the Bel Air School. Our next Fridley Public School Board Meeting will be March 19th, work session beginning at 5:30, open forum at 7:00, and our business meeting here at the Fridley Community Center at 7:30. Also, I want to make a note, the Fridley Schools Foundation has a Black and Gold Gala that's being, taking place at Jack's Cafe, and that will be March 28th, and at 5:00, starting about 5:30 p.m. I'm not sure exactly what time dinner will start, probably about 8:00, 6:30, I assume, is the way we did it last year. And certainly, if you're interested, check the websites out of both the school and the school foundation for tickets for that event.
Chair Riddle, can I plug Fridley Trip? Every two years, we have our fundraiser for the middle school students to take their trip to the East Coast, so we are having our Taste of Fridley Gala on March 8th, starts at 6 o'clock, live auction, silent auction, photo booth, that sort of thing like we did last time. Tickets are $20 in advance or $25 at the door, and you can get those on the foundation website as well.
And where's that being held?
Banquet's in Minnesota.
Thank you.
We had to upgrade, we ran out of parking last time.
Right.
Bad problem to have.
Yeah. Any, anything else for the board this evening? If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Perueta, seconded by Thornton, to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are adjourned at 8:15.